Hello, my name is Rose Riley and I am a member of the League of Women Voters of Washtenaw County. Welcome to our candidate forums for the November 8th general election. The League is a nonpartisan nonprofit organization that promotes voter education and participation. And we host candidate forums to help voters make informed choices. Statements expressed by the candidates are neither endorsed nor opposed by the League of Women Voters. The League does not certify any candidate response as accurate. Voters are encouraged to fact check information shared at the forum. Now, let's hear from the candidates.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Lynn Kumansky and I will be moderating the forum tonight. It's my honor to introduce the three nonpartisan candidates running for Lincoln Consolidated Schools Board of Education. We have Matthew Bentley, Stacy Kind, and Jason Donovan Moore. Candidate Christopher Ortiz was unable to join us this evening and we are going to try to schedule a separate forum for him so that his voice is heard. Thank you, candidates, for participating in the forum. We are now ready for opening statements. Mr. Bentley, I'll let you begin.
Well, thank you very much for setting this up and having us. My name is Matthew Bentley. I have been a Lincoln resident for almost 20 years. I'm a public school teacher. I have taught in, this is my 24th year teaching in Levonia Public Schools. About a year and a half ago, there was unfortunately, two open seats on the board. And so, you know, they, people kind of came to me, like, oh, you should run for the school board, you should run for the school board. So, I went to the, it was like an American Idol audition for it, and so did Jason. And we were able to get on, which was great. We were chosen out of, I think, six candidates. And since then, I feel like I have built positive relationships with the other board members and administration. And we have really good things going at Lincoln, and I just want to keep it going.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Bentley. And now, Ms. Kind, may we have your opening statement?
Hello, thank you for having me. My name is Stacy Kind. I have been a resident for around 12 years. My son has, my oldest son has made it through young fives, through kindergarten at Child's Elementary in Lincoln. I had to pull a mount due to school policies and he wasn't getting the education that I saw fit. And nor will he go back until some of the education is corrected. I'm running to hope to change some of that for all the other kids that are still in the district and hope that they get a better education, that they learn to read and all that other stuff. I want, I want there to be more parents' rights in the schools, more educator rights, get everything back to basics and just use common sense.
Thank you, Ms. Kind. We're now ready for your opening statement, Mr. Moore.
Good evening. Again, thank you for having us. Thank you for setting this up. My name is Jason D. Moore, Jason Donovan Moore. I've been a Lincoln resident for approximately 14 years now. I grew up in Ann Arbor, Michigan before going to school down south. My mother was a third grade public school teacher. My father worked for the, one of the car companies in the big three. And I've been volunteering since my oldest, who's in middle school now, was in kindergarten at Bishop Elementary. Again, as Matt mentioned earlier, I was one of the two people selected to be a special appointee last year with the school board. And since then, it's, you know, I've really taken a hold of it and worked tirelessly, tirelessly, excuse me, to help improve some of the things. I want to continue on that battle.
Thank you, Mr. Moore, and thank you, candidates. Now, we're going to move on to the questions. We'll be starting with Ms. Kind for the first question. First topic area is priorities. What are your top two priorities if elected?
My top two priorities would be allowing parents to be a part of their child's education. I don't know if you know, as of right now, they're not allowed even in the buildings unless they have an appointment. I love to volunteer in my son's classroom. I did it every week. I think it's important for students to see their parent be a part of their education, to continue it further. And I want all of the education to go back to basics. Enough with the social emotional learning programs, enough with the COVID regulations, and enough with the DEI. So, that's what I want to see. I want, I want to see kids actually learning again.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Kind. Mr. Moore, same question?
I would have to say my top two priorities, definitely continuing on with the growth that we've seen in the curriculum. I like the fact that our students are learning about many different aspects, including about the history, the true history, figuring out what works best for them and making sure that their mental health is taken care of. And also parent engagement, just making sure that parents get a chance to interact with their children, with the teachers, and offer their resources and commitment to the program as well.
Thank you, Mr. Moore, and now, Mr. Bentley.
So, if reelected, my priorities, they are now and will continue to be, is to make Lincoln a lighthouse district for families and for teachers. Over the next five to 10 years, obviously you know there's a teacher shortage, and it's not going to get any better. Teachers that are my age that were able to buy years are coming up upon retirement. And I want Lincoln to have the best and the brightest teachers in our district. Jason and I have worked in the new contract where teachers at Lincoln are the highest paid teachers in Washtenaw County. And we're, so that's great. That's something, you know, a flag for us. And we're trying to, you know, get the best teachers. And we're, the professional development that the teachers are going through to start the year has been fantastic this year. So, to continue to get staff to keep them and to get new ones, and then also the same with families. I want to show off the great programs that Lincoln has and, you know, just to keep families coming to Lincoln. We had our highest number of kindergartners this year than we've had in years, and we just want to keep that going.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Bentley. We're going to move on to question number two, and we'll be starting with Mr. Moore for this question. Mr. Moore, this question deals with student learning loss. What should Lincoln Consolidated Schools do to address the student learning loss that occurred during COVID?
Definitely, sorry, making sure I was unmuted. Definitely during COVID, students had, were kind of forced into this virtual world. I mean, it was a new atmosphere for all of us. So, it's one of those things that making sure that we reach the students where they're at. Some students did fine virtually. Some students were able to keep up with technology and able to focus more virtually. Where others were a little bit more distracted. I have two sons and they both went different ways in terms of their learning. So, it's really important that we reach the students where they are. And we're going to have to put in a little bit more work and a little bit more effort to make sure that we do get these students back up to par, up to level with where they should be in terms of learning.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Moore. Next, Mr. Bentley, same question?
So, this is a great question. Obviously, we want every kid to be as successful as they can be. And one of the things that Lincoln needs to do is get support for those students. We had a meeting a couple of months ago about, we're actually present October, a workshop about, you know, what we thought teachers wanted, and we were really focusing on lower class sizes. And the principals came in and said, no, we need help with this social emotional learning to, you know, get these kids, they just need help. And so, we're really trying to focus our money and resources on getting extra teachers into the building to help these, or professionals to help these students out that needed, to get them where they need to be. And with the, I don't know, about a month ago, they, Michigan passed a law that retired teachers are able to come back if they've been retired for nine months. So, we're really trying to work on, maybe we can get some of those old, not old, older Lincoln teachers back to work with these kids in the classroom that have worked with kids before.
Thank you, Mr. Bentley. Ms. Kind, same question?
Hi, I didn't know that they were going to be having retired teachers come back, which I think is excellent because I thought that they had the best type of teaching because they've been doing it for years. I know, I understand that Lincoln bought out 12 of the, they bought out 12 teachers, 12 of the oldest teachers during a teacher shortage, which I thought was a terrible move. I'd love to have some extra reading programs since reading is the fundamental of learning. You know, ditch the sight words, go back with phonics, and, you know, stop shoving the kids in a corner to read silently. That doesn't help anybody. My, my son personally failed miserably during COVID with trying to learn there. And I guess it would be better to implement more programs, but less of the social emotional programs. Maybe more of the programs that actually do teach, you know, reading, writing, and math. So, maybe hire some counselors so that kids aren't explaining their whole problems in front of the whole class. That's my point of view.
Thank you, Ms. Kind. We'll move on to question number three, and this one will be to Mr. Bentley first. This is teacher mental health. That's the topic. The question is, school teachers have been on the front lines during the COVID pandemic, and news media report that teachers are overwhelmed and depressed. Are there specific additional steps that Lincoln Consolidated Schools should be taking to support its teachers? And how would you pay for this?
Being a teacher for the last 24 years, who, who would have saw this coming 10 years ago when they started taking away things from the teachers? I think what we need to do is just make teachers feel valued. I mean, I've always said, everything I do in my classroom, it's about building relationships. And I have tried to do that as a board member, to build relationships with the administrators, who, I mean, we deal with more, but then also with the teachers, you know, when I see teachers that are out. And I have three sons that are in school, sixth grade, eighth grade, and 10th grade. So, I see a lot of teachers. I just ask them, how's it going? What do you need from us? And basically, it's just building that relationship with the teachers where they feel comfortable coming to me and Jason and all the other school board members. And we have a fantastic superintendent who, he cares about that staff like, like you care about your own kids. And just to keep building that relationship is what we need to do.
Thank you, Mr. Bentley. Same question to you, Ms. Kind?
I believe that Lincoln teachers especially are very, very underpaid and very underappreciated. They're some of the lowest paid teachers in the surrounding areas, actually. They do deserve to be paid more. In other countries, teachers are valued the same as doctors. I really don't feel like they're getting that type of appreciation. A lot of the teachers are just leaving. They're being told to teach things that they don't feel comfortable teaching. And I would go back and say that the superintendent, he gets the highest raise every time voted by the board when I don't think he deserves it. I think maybe he should be giving some of that back to the teachers, actually. So, that's what I want to note about that and the superintendent. And if parents were allowed in the buildings just to volunteer whenever they could, I know that they could fill out forms when, when they want to help out the teachers, but more parental involvement would be nice. And not one time have I seen a board member walk through, read books, or anything to any of the students. I've never even met a board member while my child attended school in Lincoln District. So, that would be nice, more involvement.
Hey, thank you, Ms. Kind. And finally, this question to you, Mr. Moore.
Yeah, I definitely would like to see that our teachers are valued. As Matt alluded to, we just want to ask them, you know, what can we offer? What can we do? Money's not everything, but we do want to make sure that we continue to make staying at Lincoln competitive to the surrounding areas. And that's why we worked hard on the contract to make sure that Lincoln teachers are some of the highest paid in the Washtenaw area based off this last contract that went forth, that they voted on. We also want to make sure that we give them the resources that they needed and offer our commitment and help. Not just sit on some board, sit up there and say thank you, but as a board member, it was just, it was really good just to go into the schools the last few years, once COVID restrictions have started to be lifted. And just play with the kids, read to the kids, and not just the schools, but also the Lincoln Senior Center that's available, going and speaking with them. We got a chance, actually, Matt and I got a chance to go over there the other day and kind of have lunch and celebrate some of their achievements. So, just being around the teachers, the students, the seniors, being around the community. That's the important thing and making sure that they know that they're now alone in this fight and that we're all there to help out and try and grow Lincoln Consolidated Schools as much as possible.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Moore. We're going to move on to the next question, and Ms. Kind, you'll be going first this time. This is, the topic is funding. The state of Michigan has appropriated a record $9,150 for every student in every district, which means an extra $435 per student at Lincoln Schools. How do you propose using this increased funding, Ms. Kind?
I proposed using the increased funding with better trained teachers, maybe not just all the ones that are fresh out of college. Make, make our school look better and more available to teachers so that we get good trained teachers in that kind of know what they're doing. I'm not saying these teachers don't know what they're doing. I've actually loved all the teachers that I've dealt with. I don't have a problem with the teachers. But for the students, just get more help. They need more help with basic skills, reading, writing, math, like I keep going over and saying unfortunately, but they need extra help. I don't think they need extra social emotional learning or to know how to treat everybody, not just certain groups of people. So, there's a lot of ways that, that those funds could better be used. I know that they have had record breaking funds, and I really don't see much being done with it, including pay to staff and educators. So, that would be nice to see that too, to retain our teachers.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Kind. Mr. Moore, to you now?
Yes, with this funding, I would, I would love to see more curriculum building, more resource building, and general technology building, just to make Lincoln Schools more competitive with the surrounding areas and the country in general. We need to definitely step it up to, to make our schools one of the higher schools and more, one of the more sought out educations available to those students around, especially with school of choice and, you know, families having the option to go, whether it's to Lincoln or Ypsilanti or Ann Arbor Schools or Selina, so on. Excuse me, just I want to make sure that we are offering top notch education and curriculum, whether it be in HVAC, plumbing, math, English, or wherever it may be. Making sure that we offer those opportunities where students can learn in any different aspect, not just in one particular aspect.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Moore. And finally, Mr. Bentley for this question?
We need to help our struggling learners, and this is basically goes back to what we talked about like a question or two ago. And we, we have had, this has been a discussion for the past meeting or two. With this extra funding, we want to, as I said, bring back teachers or get more support to get those kiddos where they need to be. The students are behind. I mean, our, our director of instruction does an excellent job, and we're seeing progress. I mean, we're, we're building, and we just want to be able to get those struggling learners, the more help. Maybe they don't work great in a big class, or class of like 2024. Maybe in a small group of two or three teachers that, you know, a retired young fives teacher who's been retired for a year, who can work with those kids to get them where they need to be. That needs to be our focus.
Thank you, Mr. Bentley. And we're going to move on to the next question. Mr. Bentley, you'll be going first this time. This is, the topic is challenges. What are the two most important challenges currently facing the Lincoln Consolidated Board of Education? Mr. Bentley?
Our, our main challenge and is the same thing with my priority is staffing. We just need teachers. I mean, we, knock on wood, we were, we had every position filled starting this school year. And then, you know, two weeks into school, this person left, and so now we need to fill that position. I, I could be wrong on this numbers, but someone had said, you know, Eastern Michigan used to have like 100 special education graduates, and this year they had 12. So, it's just, you know, we need, we need to get those teachers into Lincoln and, and keep them there. That, that's just a huge challenge, and we just need to keep going at it.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Bentley. Ms. Kind, you're next, please. Ms. Kind?
I'm sorry, what was your question again?
Okay, this is about challenges. And it's what are the two most important challenges currently facing the Lincoln Consolidated Board of Education?
You know, since I'm not necessarily on the board right now, I don't know what challenges they face day to day. But from what I see, they have transparency issues with the community and, and I don't mean that in a bad way. I'm sorry. I know it doesn't fall solely on them, maybe the superintendent, but I, I don't want this to sound rude, but also common sense. The board is supposed to work for the, the parents and the students. Teachers have unions that work for them. I, I feel that they are working to fit the union schedules rather than the parents. So, maybe working a little better with the parents would be a good idea.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Kind. Mr. Moore, same question?
Yes, definitely staffing is a big concern in all areas. Transportation, teaching, we have faced a huge influx of, while, as mentioned before, while we did get every position filled, we're back to not necessarily the drawing board, but we're still kind of facing this uphill battle. So, we definitely want to approach staffing. And then just overall communication, not necessarily within the board, but also as mentioned earlier, we want to make sure that, you know, what we do is seen by everybody and that we do have this transparency and people get the facts and get a clear understanding of what's going on. A lot of times, it's mainly just miscommunication and misinformation that's put out there. So, we just want to make sure that people see the actual, the actual things that are going on when there are changes being made, what's being done when there's a problem. Because we all know problems are going to happen. So, what's being done to fix it? So, talking about and making sure that, that is, that is known throughout the community, not just when somebody goes and posts on social media one point of view instead of the entire point of view.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Moore. We're going to move on to student learning is our next topic, and Mr. Moore, this will come to you first. So, in terms of student learning, are you satisfied with the level of student learning in the district? What could be done to improve student learning?
Well, I think that student learning in our district has gotten better. They can always, there's always room for improvement, and every student learner is different. Everybody learns in a different way. So, you can't just reach the high achieving students. Sometimes you have to reach for those that need a little bit of extra help. So, again, I hate to be a dead horse, but, you know, staffing, getting these, getting teachers and getting the retired teachers back, if that's the case, making sure that we can reach as many students as possible so they do have the best chance to learn and be the best version of themselves.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Moore. Mr. Bentley, to you?
I am not satisfied with our student learning. I mean, we want all students to be successful. And if all students are not successful, then we should not be satisfied. What are we going to do about it? We have, Coranza Smith is our new assistant superintendent for instruction. She's been there for two years, and she is top notch. She is looking at the data and seeing where, what she needs to focus on. And we're seeing that improvement. I mean, Jason and I have only been on in a year and a half, but we, you know, we've seen the data before, and it has improved in the year and a half we've been there. From, you know, summer school, they, they started with the half day summer school in the summer of 2021. This year, they moved into the full day for the elementary school kids. And, you know, the data jumped from, you know, 20 to 21, and I anticipating jumping again. So, just letting her do her job and with her team, I think, as I said, we're, we're on the right track.
Hey, Mr. Bentley. Ms. Kind, same question?
You know, I like the idea of having smaller groups to better see what the individual needs, what, what the individual is struggling with. Getting extra resources and teachers in there to individualize a plan for each student that's struggling. Not all kids wear the same size shoes. So, what one kid might be struggling with, obviously the other is not struggling with. So, that would definitely help a lot to kind of get into the kids' brains and see what they kind of need personally. I, I don't think that's a good way to do it through standardized tests. Not everybody's a good, a good test taker. Those don't really, in my opinion, mean much. Not everybody's a good test taker. You know, some kids just fly through it because they want to move on to going to play. So, I'd like to see more individualized attention per student. It doesn't really help when you're just focusing on 24 students. So, individualized attention is a must.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Kind. We're going to move on to the next one, and Mr. Bentley, this will be to you first this time. The topic is collaboration between community and school. One of the district's top priorities is students, parents, staff, and community. Share responsibility for student learning and must work together on behalf of students. Is there a need to improve communication within the district? And how would you improve communication between parents and the school?
I mean, there's always a need to improve, improve communication if you can. I mean, the more communication, the better. And I think we're doing that. I know just in the middle school didn't used to send out a communication. Now, they send out every week. The high school didn't used to send out a communication. Now, they send out every week. I used to receive the elementary schools' communications. I, I don't because we don't have, I don't have an elementary school student anymore. But getting parents involved in their kids' education is super important. I even, I, as a teacher myself, I do so many after school activities. I have a tailgate party set up for next Friday. I have different things set up, and then I'm trying to bring that to the board. Now, you know, the board, we have to stay in our lane. We don't just come up with stuff. We, you know, other people do that, but we try to encourage it. When, when we got our, we saw the emails that we have a record number of kindergartners. I'm like, we need to do a kindergarten family night, like just to get parents more involved in the school, to get them loving Lincoln. That's our goal.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Bentley. Ms. Kind, same question?
When I attended a Child's Elementary, I personally thought they had great parent involvement. Actually, that elementary school is what they're known for. Unfortunately, COVID kind of knocked that out. And now, I think parents feel that they're kind of locked out of the building. They can't even walk their students to classes anymore. It's kind of hard to be involved when you're kind of shoved out of the way. And I know that the Department of, the Michigan Department of Education is actually having videos telling teachers to keep parents out of some of the instruction that I have seen on their website. Those are about personal matters, not necessarily like reading, writing, and math, but that's a different subject. But I, I would like to see parents involved again. I don't want to see them treated like criminals and not being able to like go check on their kid, come volunteer last minute without a note of approval, all that. So, you have to be kind of more open to parents and let them in to be more involved. But communication letters are a good start though, so I guess that works.
Thank you, Ms. Kind. Mr. Moore, same question?
Yeah, I definitely think that parent engagement, especially now that the restrictions are starting, COVID restrictions are starting to be lifted, parent engagement is huge. Having more open houses for, for the new, for the new buildings, for the, for the new activities. Again, celebration of these milestones, having a huge kindergarten class, you know, let's, let's bring in the parents, let's bring in the community. We have the new athletic field and the, the new indoor athletic field. Having open houses where the community can come out and see what is available, what, what has been done, what, what's being done with this military money. And then, most importantly, being present, being available, especially as board members. It's our responsibility to get out there and just meet the people, meet, meet the parents, meet the community, meet the students. Showing our faces, being more than just, you know, again, just sitting up there, meeting once or twice a month, but actually getting out there and putting in the work to, to show that we care and we do want to improve the community, and we do wanna help the schools and the school district become better.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. And this will be our final question. The topic is COVID policy, and I'll be starting with Ms. Kind on this one. What COVID precautions should be in place at Lincoln Consolidated?
I'm glad you started with me on that one. I think that COVID precautions are up to the parents. I don't know if any of you guys know right now, but Washtenaw County is in a high COVID risk area. Why are the schools not updating that on their websites? Are they gonna wait till after Student Count Day, you know, so that parents aren't keeping their children out? If it's not a burden, a worry, a worrisome, a problem right now, then I don't see that it should be a problem in the future. It doesn't go any higher than high. So I don't wanna see people forcing kids in masks again. That kind of hurts reading. Young kids need to see lips to read. Therapy, therapies, speech therapies are at all-time high because of these COVID policies. I think that COVID is not over, but the pandemic is. They're not recording numbers of deaths anymore because, you know, it never was what the media said it was to be. So just do what we used to do before. Wash your hands when you come in from lunch. Wipe down your desks. That's all common sense. It's, it's the flu. So I don't think there should be any more COVID precautions.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Kind. Mr. Moore, to you next.
Yeah, definitely. While the pandemic is, is becoming lighter, you know, we still gotta be, be cautious. We cannot just let our guard down when it comes to COVID or, or any infectious disease. So as a school district, we follow the, the, the guidance of the Washtenaw Community Health Department and the CDC to determine what actually should be the policy. Again, as a board, we have a responsibility and the trust of the community to make sure that we are doing what is best for the safest, to keep our children and our community in general as safe as possible. So by following the guidelines and the, the recommendations of the CDC, we try to make sure that we are keeping the students, the teachers, and the staff in general as safe as possible.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. And Mr. Bentley.
Thank goodness, things are starting to get more back to normal. I mean, I, I'm really grateful of that. Just kind of echoing what Jason says, you know, our COVID precautions and are now and what they always have been, is we follow the recommendations of the Washtenaw County Health Department. And the Washtenaw County Health Department and the CDC says, you know, it's okay to have students without masks. I mean, it's a recommendation. So if a student wants to wear a mask, they can wear a mask. If a teacher wants to wear a mask, they can wear a mask. It is up to them. I think, you know, everyone's kind of familiar with masks nowadays, so I don't think anybody is ostracized for wearing a mask. Being in the classroom myself, some kids wear masks. And I don't think anybody says anything to them. So, I mean, it's kind of the students and the teachers' choice if they wanna wear a mask. And knock on wood, it's been going okay, and let's, hopefully, it stays that way.
Thank you, Mr. Bentley. It is now time for closing statements. So we will begin with Mr. Bentley for your closing statement.
Well, thank you very much for this. I said, I got on this board for three reasons, is my kids. I have three students in Lincoln, and I wanted some skin in the game to be a part of it, to have, you know, kind of a say in their education. I didn't get on the board with any, I didn't have any bad intent. I think everything was going well. I don't have an agenda. I just wanna keep building positive relations with the school board members, the administration, the staff, the students, and keep everything going. I said, I think we have a good thing going, and I'd like to keep it going.
Thank you, Mr. Bentley. Your closing statement, Ms. Kind?
I would like to see, for Lincoln, to see the students and teachers be kept, to be retained by whatever that means, by whether it's pay or less COVID policies. I wanna see in-person learning so that our students can get a better education. I love the district. I was very happy with it. And I'd love to be able to one day put my kids back in the district. I want to be on the board to know more about the transparency issues and to inform more of the community about the things that should be going on within the schools and help opening up the schools more to the community, being a little bit more transparent. I think we need that on the board. We need transparency on the board to the parents.
Thank you, Ms. Kind. And finally, Mr. Moore, your closing statement.
At the end of the day, it's about helping people. It's about being available and showing up and being willing to do the work. Being a board member is not glamorous or, or fun-loving and, and wonderful and everything that, you know, some may crack it up to, crack it up to be. But it's about putting in the work. And we got a little bit of taste of it in the past 15, 16 months when we elected as special appointees. Now that we're running for reelection, again, it's about helping people. And we really just want to, to make sure that we offer the total commitment and the resources needed to help grow Lincoln District. I believe that together, we can, the whole community, we can come together, and we can get this thing headed, continuing in the right direction. So it's starting to go that way. I, I appreciate the work that's been done by all, all my partners, all the community, but we have a ways to go. So I am glad that I am here, and I'm looking forward to doing more work.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. And I wanna thank all the candidates for a lively and candid discussion about issues for Lincoln Consolidated Schools. And thank you so much for participating in this valuable session.
The League thanks the candidates and volunteers who participated in tonight's forum and community members who submitted questions. Please urge others to view our forums. Most importantly, please vote in the November 8th general elections, either by absentee ballot or in person.